All right, good evening. I call the meeting of the Newark City School Board on this eighth day of May at 6:33 PM.
Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Here.
Mr. Bline?
Here.
All right, Mr. Weber will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance upon the high and United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a recognition. We have recognized Taylor Jacobs, a student at the high school, chosen to perform with the Newark Granville Symphony Orchestra. And Taylor's not here right now, so he hops in the room. He's very well. Yeah. Very good. Firm yesterday's numbers. Also, our Government Finance Officers Associations of the United States of Canada would like to recognize excellence in financial reporting and award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting and award of financial reporting achievement presented to Patty Stocker, acting treasurer of the Newark City School District, and Mr. Warren Weber will present that at this time.
Do you have floor staff members?
We are very fortunate in Newark City to have the folks that we do, working with our resources and working with our administration, our benefit plans, and all of those things that have come in through that side of the building to do a great job for us. We also would like to have a special report now, which Mike Sobel will present to us, the Newark City's first five-year forecast.
Now, can you crack her, do I have them maybe up there? You want me to run that mic back there? Yeah, we'll run off of this. Yep. Yes. Yes. Now. Can you use the microphone or the microphone? Did Mike say it before? Okay, good. Okay, thank you for having me. My name is Mike Sobel. I am with Public Finance Resources. I'm also the treasurer at Granville's exempted village schools. After Jeff passing, Patty contacted Public Finance Resources, asked us to come in, one of us to come in and do the five-year forecast on your behalf, since I'm right next door and with my board's blessing, came in, and so that'll be fine. I have no problem doing the forecast, you guys. So, all I'm going to do tonight is a short presentation on the five-year forecast, just give a quick overview, kind of compare it back to where you were when we did the October forecast, and then have you adopt it and get it filed with the state as required by law. If we look at the forecast at where it is right now, and if you look at the line that says revenue surplus or deficit, what you'll see is the projection for the, through the five years, is each year the district will be taking in more money than it is expending, assuming the renewal of the district's emergency levy in 2019. If you look, where it says ending balance above the heavy black line is the ending balance with the renewable levy, the bottom line, and you can see the surplus or deficit without the levy. Above that, you'll see if the levy is not renewed in 2019, the district will indeed start spending more than it's taking in. When you get out to the 2021 school year, that amount will be almost $6 million more than you would be spending than taking in, and that will quickly erode the revenue surplus and the revenue base that the district has moving out beyond the five-year forecast This is comparing the forecast right now to where it was back in October, trying to just show you where the differences are. On the revenue side, there's two big changes. Unrestricted state aid, which is the revenue that comes from the state, that is projected to be 4.4% higher than was projected back in the October forecast, over $1.004, 1.4 million more than in October. Keep in mind, part of that is $350,000 that is casino revenue, which in the October forecast was showing up in the total other financing sources. I have moved it into the unrestricted state aid, which is where it's posted when it comes into the district. Property taxes, the general property tax has been, the forecast has been reduced by almost $600,000, and that is a sharp drop in delinquency payments. I think we'll see that slide a little bit later on. Delinquency payments are down sharply this year from where they were the last couple of years before that. That's actually kind of a good thing, that is an indication that more taxpayers are being current on their taxes and not building up delinquencies. So, you really would rather have fewer delinquency payments and more current collections. Those are the two big differences on the revenue side. With all that together, revenues are projected to be about $900,000 higher than in the October forecast. Looking over at the expenditures, the personnel services and benefits based on trend and where you are right now, you can see are both running below where the October forecast had been. Purchase services are also running a little bit below. That's being offset a little bit by supplies and materials, primarily the purchase of equipment, computer equipment and technology, which is in that area, having moved rather than in the capital budget, which I think originally had been. But even with all that, expenditures are expected to be about $840,000 below where they were projected back in October. So, when you take the revenue, the expenditure differences, the district is expected to be about 1.7 million dollars that are off in fiscal year '17 than it was projected to be back in October. Looking at the revenue side of the forecast, over the last three years, average annual growth in revenues has been about 4.8%. The big driver of that really has been the unrestricted grants and aid from the state. You can see those have grown almost 7% a year during the period. You see a very large increase in the restricted grants and aid. That's more an accounting change than anything else, and how the state is now recommending that the district post certain parts of the payments that come from them for economic disadvantage primarily. So, that's showing, so that's kind of showing up separately. Over the upcoming three years, the average annual change is expected to be about 3% growth a year, so about between 60 and 70% of the rate that has grown over the last three years. You see some moderation in the unrestricted grants and aid in that growth rate that is causing some of that to come down, and of course, the restricted grants and aid are not growing at 400% now that change has been made. Looking at just an overview of where the revenues in the district come from, and these are the operating revenues, 50% of the revenue that the district gets comes from unrestricted state aid. Then you have another 3% in restricted aid, and 4% is property allocations, which are the 10%, 2.5% roldeck in the homestead. So, essentially, the district is getting 57% of its operating revenue from the state. Real estate taxes make up about 26%, income taxes about 12%, and then the others are pretty small percentages. So, the district is most heavily reliant on what the state decides to do with the funding formula, because that's by far the biggest source of the operating budget. Couple issues with the revenues. This is a reappraisal year in Lincoln County, 2017 is. I have had a series of conversations with county auditor Mike Smith over the last four or five months. The county is looking at probably about a 12% increase in residential valuations this year, and expecting Newark to be a little bit slower than the county as a whole. We have pegged the estimate at about 8%. You're probably going to be somewhere in an 8% to 10% range as far as the reappraisal on residential property. In 2020, which will then be a triennial update year, looking at additional 5% increase. Keep in mind that these are three-year changes. So, that 8% is reflecting three years' worth of change. It's not all one year. The effect of the 8% growth rate moves the district back to the 20-year floor. What that means is that should the actual values grow by more than 8%, let's say they were to grow at 10%, that any additional percentage growth that you get in values will translate into a corresponding percentage increase in property tax revenues. Because the district's at the 20-year floor, the tax rate can't be reduced any further under law, and so you will get growth on anything above 8. You're actually getting growth on, right now, I think it's about 3.5% of that it's taking to get the district to the floor. The other 4.5% growth, the district is seeing additional revenues on. If you take a look at your property tax revenues, what I really want to highlight, the green area on the two hooked bars on the right, that is actually what's kind of in play with the renewal of the emergency levy in 2019. The red bars are representing the forecast of what you would get. The green bars are, or the green portion of the bars is what the district would lose if the renewal does not take place in 2019. You can see very slow growth rates over the forecast period. You see a little bit of a yo-yo between 2014, 15, 16, and 17. In 14, you had particularly high delinquencies. They went down in 15, and they jumped back up again in 16, then have come back down again a little bit in 17, which is what's causing that up and down that you're seeing. The growth that you start seeing between 18 and 19, and it's a little hard to see the growth because of the scaling, that's the impact of the reappraisal and the growth on the values above what takes you to the 20-year floor. State aid, this is a little bit tricky at this point to forecast. You know, at this point, we know what the governor proposed, we know what the House has proposed. You know, the House passed its budget last week. The House, while I'm here, this is actually based on kind of what we would expect without, in a normal period. The important part for the district is the growth cap. The district is on a cap right now, meaning that if the funding formula says you should be getting more money than the state is allowing you to have. The state right now is capping your growth at 7.5%. You'll see that in the kind of grayish colored line in 2016 and 17. The forecast going forward is the growth cap to be at about 5%. In the governor's proposed budget, it was 5%. The House actually, much to my surprise, raised it to 5.5%. That actually is a slight benefit to you relative to what's in the forecast right now. However, the Senate has been making some waves about cutting back on a lot of that and possibly even holding every district to what they got last year. That, of course, would have a negative impact on the district if that's where we might. We're not going to know this until the end of June, when the budget is passed. What I don't think will happen is, I don't think any of those assumptions is going to make a material difference in the long-term forecast. It'll make some difference, but I don't think it will be material. Based on the forecast that I have in here right now, the district would come off the cap in 2021. You know, in the 2021 school year, all of that cap money, again, assuming a 5% cap each year, would come off the cap and would become formula funded at that point. Looking at the expenditure side of the budget, over the last five years, expenditures have grown at about an annual rate of 3.25%. You'd see that's somewhat been held down by the growth in personnel services, which have grown only 1.7% annually. A lot of what drove that was the heavy retirements that you had during the five-year forecast period, which were replaced by, you know, younger teachers at lower salaries. And so, that kind of restricted the growth rates of the wages. Employee benefits have grown at about 3.7%, which is actually pretty good, considering what a lot of districts have seen going on with their healthcare expenditures. You do see a bigger annual growth rate in purchase services. Most of that is outside of the control of the district. The biggest pieces of purchase services are going to be payments to community schools, your deductions there, and your payments to students who are open enrolling into other districts around the area. Those are your two biggest pieces of purchase services. Of course, you don't have a whole lot of control over what happens in those lines. The state will subtract what the state has to subtract under the law. Going forward, over the upcoming five-year period, we're expecting about a 4% increase in expenditures annually. Again, the biggest driver of this is going to be faster growth in personnel services. The pace of retirements has slowed considerably and is expected to continue to be at a much slower pace than what we've seen during the last five years, so that you're not getting the offsetting impacts from the base increases that you're seeing. About a 5% growth rate in benefits over the period. Right now, you had a good renewal on your health insurance, only about 4% this year. That is helping quite a bit, and that makes a big difference as it factors through over a five-year period when you get to the compounding. You still see a fairly sizable growth rate in supplies and materials. Again, what's really driving that is technology purchases and moving the technology out of the capital budget into the operating budget. I think there's a recognition that a lot of the devices that you're buying maybe don't have a five-year life anymore and are being replaced faster, and so the district has moved that spending into the operating budget out of the permanent improvement budget. Taking a look at your overall expenditures, salaries make up a little over half of the total spending of the district. Benefits are another 20%. Purchase services actually are larger than benefits, and that's actually kind of rare to see that. That's really a reflection of the number of students that you have going to charter schools and open enrolling to other districts in the area. And that's what's really driving the high percentage of spending in purchase services. Kind of summing up the forecast, again, you guys are expected to take in more revenue than you're spending over the five-year period, assuming, again, if the emergency levy is renewed. The fund balance is expected to grow to over 40% of annual expenditures. At the end of this year, it's anticipated to be about 39%. So, it's going to grow slightly over the five-year forecast period. I don't think there will be, based on everything we're seeing here, other than the renewal of the emergency levy, it does not look like there would be a need for any additional money beyond that during the five-year period. Obviously, that's based on the assumptions that are built into the forecast. Just again, summing up the risks to the forecast that you're looking at, positive risk is that the residential values grow more than the 8% that's in the forecast. Negative risk is what might happen to, especially to a cap over the biennium that, you know, that, based on what the state does in the budget. Kind of about, what I look at as a balanced risk are the growth rates we have in there for health insurance and purchase services. You know, they could be higher, they could be lower. I don't think that there's a particular risk on either side of those items going forward. And so, that's just kind of a summary of the budget. I'd be happy to answer questions that any of members may have.
Summary there at the end, kind of put a nice bow on it. But if I'm hearing you right, I just want to make sure we pass that emergency levy in '09, and we're going to try to renew that again before 2019, I think.
Correct. You would have to be, you would need to be on the ballot either during 2019, or you could go in November of 2018, is the earliest by law, that you can be on the ballot to renew that.
As you see that, we're 12 years out, making do with what it is that we've had, and we're still doing okay.
You're doing all things are okay. To me, everything looks really good for the forecast, both where you are in the current, you're still taking in more revenue than you're expending, and when you look at the cash balances that you're holding, provide a lot of cushion in case something goes south in the forecast, or, you know, if the economy goes bad and it causes your income tax to weaken, and state aid to get kind of, you know, I think you have the resources to survive that. It's a great position, Dan.
I want to thank the board for allowing us to use the services of Public Finance Resources. Thank Mike for being close by and taking care of it. He's kind of an expert in the five-year forecast, does a lot of training for other treasurers in the area, state lines, so on, and also grateful that Granville kind of blessed his spending a little time with us, because it did work out nicely, that he was close enough that we weren't racking up mileage or time for him to get to here, when we had to have some meetings and go over things. So, I'm really appreciative of that.
Yeah, I would second that. I've talked with Jeff Brown, the Granville superintendent, and also Dr. Jennifer Horn, the board president, within the last month, and expressed my appreciation for allowing you to do this, and they're very supportive of the district and their condolences from Jeff's passing, and so they absolutely felt it was the right thing for them to share you, and so we appreciate them.
Happy to do it.
First, I have attended the Board Leadership Institute a couple weeks ago in Miami. They presented there to about 50 or 60 people, maybe.
It was full.
Whatever fit the room, it was full. And it seemed that your professionalism, know how, got along well.
Thank you.
I would like for the board to make a motion at this time, while Mike's still here, to approve this forecast for submission to the state, so that if you have any additional questions, Mike's still here.
I would so move along with our appreciation too, Mike. John, you did very much.
Second. Mr. Bline?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes. Motion carries, and I thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next one agenda for us is communications from the floor. This is an opportunity to agenda on agenda items, five-minute time limit, if you're interested in kind of setting your date, and then here to the mic. No one coming to move forward.
All right, Treasurers' recommendations.
Turn this time off with the people who aren't ready to doing this. Okay. I only have five minutes, okay? Luckily, Mike did the long part, so we'll pass that. We have minutes to be approved from a special meeting March 28th, regular meeting April 10th, special meeting April 27th. We have financial reports, including interest of $31,320.74. Our ending balances as of April 30th. General fund, I'm going to read these in millions, so just everyone clear out so that it's a single dollar. $31.5 million general fund, $2.3 million bond retirement, $1.8 million permanent improvement, .1 million building fund, that fund is winding down, $1.9 million food service, 3.8 in insurance funds, and 2.7 in our classroom facilities maintenance, leaving .5 on other miscellaneous for a total of $44.07, and that equals our reconciling to the bank. We have one permanent supplemental appropriation, $300 fund, district managed student activities, $800. We have, the next two items are kind of a foot plot between the two. We have a donation on behalf of a Call to College from Eli Lilly, and it's a match for the Stephen South donation of $1,000. And then in turn, the board, I'm asking for permission, this is something Jeff did, to disperse those funds to Call to College. It's kind of an accounting thing because of the way the Lilly Foundation has to get their donations out that's funneled through us to a Call to College. And the last thing is there were two invoices you had copies of that require board approval for payment.
All right, motions approved, Treasurers' recommendations, A through F.
So moved.
Mike, thank you. Second. Calm, thanks. You call a roll pad.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Bline?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes. Thank you, Pat. Superintendents' recommendations.
Okay, under personnel, first make a note of your addendum, busy agenda, under item one, that is three resignations, it's Timothy McVeigh, Andrew Missiman, and then Aaron Steinball, Aaron is Title One, Adam Carson, who will be relocated with our family. And then under item seven, recommended substitute list there, and that would be Paul. Under item one, retirements and resignations, always we appreciate the work of our folks who retired or even resigned for their work in this game of absences, none at this time. Under item three, we have appointments and assignments. We have Ellen Cooper, Jeff Petrie, who retired. Matt Ryan, who's here tonight, it is that Matt Ryan retired from the quarterback of the Atlanta, oh, it's not to be confused with that, although you probably are. You look like you throw football a little bit that way, so in any event, we have a couple classified folks on there. Long list of supplemental contracts, we'll be on there mainly for the fall. Long list of supplemental contracts, we'll be on there mainly for the fall. Item five, salary and position adjustments. Six, tutors. Seven, again, it's substitutes. Eight, we have Rebecca Foster, who's sub for over sixty days, need actually taking on her coordinator contracts, say Matt Dunham behind the camera there, he was inadvertently left off of the extended days up to ten days, and Matt has a lot of equipment that he gets to know really well over the summertime, in terms of cleaning and that, and also some filming duties over the summertime, and that's done a really good job this year. And then H C is the adoption resolution issue contracts for certified staff members, which are in your.
All right, the superintendent's recommendations, A, one, two, eight.
Do you want to pull one of the exact?
Yes.
I was thinking there's a Laura Carr, the short continuing contract, you have one pulled back.
Yeah, I did not, I did not, I'm usually warned. So, all right.
Tom, just warning you.
Yeah. All right, we're going to pull two, we're going to pull Ellen Cooper.
Or Mel.
We'll go with them separately. So one, one through eight, minus those two individuals, we get a motion on that.
So moved.
Thank you. How do you call the board?
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Wether?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Now, hold on a minute. Okay, we go with, your calls. Correct.
I keep you the motion.
I need a motion. We're trying to. Yeah, I want to give one for you.
I'm in room four, Carlos, continue.
Thank you. Discussion, you call it.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Wether?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
I have seen, also Ms. Ellen Cooper, you're a principal, Patrick Allen, if we get a motion for that.
I'll so move.
Have to talk. Discussion. Call the board.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
No.
Mr. Wether?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
All right, all of that.
Section B, students' curriculum, have special ed contracts, will step by step in bridgeway, two organizations we use, also Shocking City Schools. Also in your packet is a list of graduation, three hundred and fourteen, I hope we're three hundred and fourteen, twenty-seven, that's on, that is every year, last minute, but we're working hard in that when the students start too. Out of state field trip to Nicaragua, Costa Rica, for Spanish two and three. Jose, are you going on that?
Uh, no.
No, you're going to miss that. You're wrestling camp, probably.
Yeah.
Approval for participation in state and federally funded programs, those have been on the agenda the last two months for public viewing, we've had a long line every day, outstanding to view those, those are listed. Again, very important here, Newark High School Limited Class Service, again, I thank the board, I've lost track, it took us five years or six years, somewhere in there, that the board recognized that, and we cluster stop those around the city, and it's needed beginning here, our students determine where the stops are by population, who's writing there, it's made a big difference, so we appreciate the board's support of that. Resolution, authorize membership in the High Athletic Association, which is a yearly spring function. Approval of school fees, we work very hard to keep those fees down and consistent across the district as low as possible. This time, we have no gifts, but a very giving community. D business, contracted services with, looking here at Computer Association, that's LACCA, you're all aware of their support to the district. Under other, suspension of extracurricular transportation fees, those are just for, the board made very clear that no extra trips would be taken, and I would tell you that our fine arts and our athletic programs did a very good job of that, and our boosters club worked as hard this year as they ever have in the past, so, and that appreciation from the boosters of those groups to the board is out there at all times, I mean, I hear it a lot, and I know the board appreciates the fact of what the, those groups do, they work very hard, and so.
Okay. Got nothing for yours?
Yeah, it's all that.
All right, approval of students' curriculum, B, C, and D. Your motion?
So moved.
Okay. Discussion?
I would just say that I'm sort of excited to see that the number of bus stops is increasing, that I think the students are starting to use the high school lesson a little more, looks like our folks are doing a good job of tracking that and responding.
I'll tell you, Mr. Key looks at that quite a bit, discussed earlier in the year, so, you know, from starting out, we were really rigid about where we were going, and it's all about our customer, which is students, so he's done a very good job of having his drivers, and our drivers do a wonderful job too of recognizing, talking to students about, you know, when we first started, we had buses going by streets where the students could walk to, but they were walking four streets over, so it's just that communication between the students and the drivers and our transportation department, Jason Key, and appreciate their work, they do a good job, and that's why you see that increasing.
And Vales? That you're calling?
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Wether?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
This is cruel, cruel and unusual punishment right here.
It won't happen very often.
Same number next month, isn't it?
No, maybe two or three.
All right, maybe just, you can turn that off now, come back in a few minutes. Intention of our board policies, it is recommended the Board of Education has its intent to adopt the following policies, as shown in the appendix, announcement being made that these policies will be available to the board, staff, and public for inspection from May 9th, 2017 through June 12th, 2017. From the SALT Committee, File 2430-02, participation of community STEM school students in extracurricular activities. File 2431, interscholastic athletics. File 2460, special education. File 2623, student assessment and academic intervention services. File 5111, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. File 5111.01, homeless students. And File 5111.03, children and youth in foster care. File 5200, attendance. File 5460, graduation requirements. File 5610, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students. File 5630.01, positive behavior and supports and limited use of restraint and seclusion. File 5830, student fundraising. File 8210, student calendar. File 8330, student records. File 8510, wellness. File 9270, equivalent education outside the schools and participation in extracurricular for students not enrolled in the district. File 9700, relations with special interest groups. So again, the hardest working committee, I think.
Absolutely.
Finance Committee brings you, File 1619, group health plans. File 1619.01, privacy protections of self-funded group health plans. File 1619.03, patient protection and affordable care act. File 3419, group health plans. File 3419.01, privacy protection of self-funded group health plans. File 3419.03, patient protection and affordable care act. File 4419, group health plans. File 4419.01, private protections of self-funded group health plans. File 4419.03, patient protection and affordable care act. File 6320, purchases. File 6325, procurement, federal grants and funds. File 6423, use of credit cards. File 6605, crowdfunding. File 8310, public records. That is all. Can I have a motion of all of those, please?
So I can. I'll second the motion. Thank you. I also want to point out that I'm a bit of a SALT committee, if you're looking for someone to thank for that experience.
I don't even preach that long a term, so.
Now that you're on the SALT committee, would you agree that SALT committees are the worst?
Oh, yeah. Also the most complicated.
Yes.
We've covered all of them.
I didn't want to comment, I'm sorry. From the SALT committee, I mean, one of these is new, they're all revisions, I mean, a lot of housekeeping that's required by the state, and we get little choices, but I will say, on the things that we do get choices on, we work very hard to make sure that they're correct choices for our district, it's the ounce of local control we get, all these policies, and I know the Finance Committee does the same thing, we do take that very seriously, make sure that that little bit of control we get, we're making the best decisions for the district.
I want to point out too, I think Denise is back here, she was very active part in doing that, so thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Mr. Wether?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
I have a beat, Superintendent's calls, you move that. So, board discussion.
It's the end of the year, congratulations, I'd like just to say, congratulations to the entire staff, teachers, administrators, everyone who's been involved with working with our children, you are the best, and I'm very, very happy and very proud to serve on this school board, so I thank you for that.
I want to thank Mike Sobel for the job he did on the five-year forecast. Congratulate Patty and the Treasurers' office staff, including the late, great Jeff Anderson, for their awards that they represented tonight. End of the year, lots going on, award ceremonies, concerts, various things. Got my new shirt, that I had a small role in the junior ROTC dinner the other night, and they gave me this, it's a junior ROTC shooting team, they did have good wisdom to, inside the rifle holder was a plastic gun that didn't even shoot classic bullets, so I think they knew me pretty well. But this week, going to the Key Club Dinner, there is that common thread in there that they're both dinners that I'm attending, but the real common thread is, this is a celebration of how good of young people we have in this district. You know, if anybody doesn't believe that, and anybody doesn't believe in junior ROTC, I'll buy your ticket next year and let you come see these kids, you know, it is just fabulous. And congratulations to the, hopefully, three hundred and fourteen people that we will be seeing and shaking their hands. Yeah. On the Saturday, the 27th, I believe that is.
In sunshine.
Congratulations, yes. Just like, as I mentioned, I attended the, oh God, the, God, I just said this, Board Leadership Institute in Columbus a couple weeks ago, and they had, they had a few good sessions, one dealt with poverty, actually saw a finance guy, they presented what Treasurers' want their boards to know about the five-year forecast, and that was interesting, and they had one on drugs in the community, or drugs in school, update on drugs in school, I think we might be a little bit ahead of them in that respect, but overall, it was a good, a good conference, I also attended the junior Air Force ROTC banquet. For me, it's what all those old Air Force guys call getting rebooked, it's where you go and you kind of surround yourself with a little bit of rebooked and remember that when you were that age or close to it, at least, so, that's about all I have to say. This is Dr.
I just want to also thank the staff in the buildings, the principals, the supervisors, the awards we get are partly because of the work they do, and that's why we hound them to follow procedures, do everything in the right order, and we appreciate their assistance to help us get the good audits and awards.
Yeah, back on SALT committee, I just can't stop talking about the hardest working committee, I did want to point out that more of our needs are our leader of the SALT committee, and more energy staff spent a lot of hours preparing for my, almost one-hour meeting, and so as far as getting all the information from the state, from the OVA, checking with the attorneys on the questions we have for the attorneys, and so she and her staff at the original department put a lot of effort into helping us be the hardest working committee, so I do want to recognize the original staff for all the work with the SALT meetings. I did, I also wanted to give a shout out to Scott Cole, he's one of the school counselors at the high school, and if you don't follow on Twitter, and he wanted to add one more person, he'd be a great person to add, he has been tweeting for months now, the different seniors with their photo in the school that they've accepted, been accepted to the schools they're going to, the universities, and so this kind of need to see where different kids are going, and he probably puts out two or three of those tweets a day about different high school seniors, I really enjoyed keeping track of the seniors in that respect, so thank you to Scott. And for those of you graduating, congratulations, for those of you that are in kindergarten through eleventh, finish strong, the beginning, the end of the school year is just as important as the beginning, if you're a little worried about what your final grade card is going to be for outstanding language arts, check, check progress book, your mom's checking it. You can. You and your teacher, find out what you can do before the end of the school year. I'm just saying this for a friend. Yeah, make the most of the month of May and finish strong. What you need to do.
Tim, can I get out of order here before this?
Yes.
First time I've been out of order. There's been so much going on lately that I think we all forgot, it's only been about two weeks ago, we had a special day here in the district talking about drug problems. And it lasted from breakfast through, what, eight-thirty or nine in the morning. And I can see you're really, really comments about that. You know, I want to thank the advocate, I think Columbus TV was there, especially Doug put that together, but you know.
This is chaos. Organized chaos. Speaking of that, I mean, when you think about the administrative staff, the principals and the teachers and your leadership and the number of hours that it took, not only to put that together, but most of the folks in the district, you know, end up spending from five to six o'clock in the morning till eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, but one day. And then that's a lot of work and, you know, even though people say, well, you get a salary to run, they include that overtime cost or, you know, just dedication. It was worth it. Thank you everyone. I'm not a ten.
Seriously, seriously, I was very, very proud to read that article and I want, I want to thank you, only half the whole community for being a true community leader. They really have, really stepped up above me on and thank you for that. Thanks for the comment, but it was a community event, a lot of folks helped out. That's the neat thing about this, this is about community, not just about the school and, and so we have businesses, social agencies. Our ripple from that day is really, well, we had seventeen grandparents at our first grandparent's meeting last week and that will grow. And I tell, I tell folks, we've got two problems with drugs in our schools. Number one, if we have one child using themself, that's a problem. But a bigger problem is that we have children who are in families or, or know people who are addicted that are extremely affected by that, that's all. And so Thursday, Mr. Bowman, Mr. Coe, at the high school and I are sitting down at lunch with a few students, want to start a drug-free club. And so, you know, that's, that's been great and I thank our student body. We have, we estimate about fifteen hundred students walk the track and walk drugs out and had Blaine Campbell from Tyler's Light speak to them down in the football field. Beautiful weather, it's really hot, the kids were well behaved, so it's just a, I know that Warren and Tim are on that committee and I just appreciate all of the board members' support, you know, that way. So anyhow, we're, we're talking about it and that's what we want to do, create that awareness and talk. Just wanted to mention, Mr. Sobel, and I echo what all of you have, have mentioned about Brando Schools, Jeff Brown and Mike Sobel, about his time over here and stepping up and we really needed it, so we really appreciate that. But, you know, I'm looking at that five-year forecast, I'm thinking back eight years, two thousand and nine, but a lot of folks that were around this table at that time and we started talking from day one about changing some things, doing it the dirt way and do it cost neutral or save money when we change programs. When I sit there and look at that and see, we don't, we don't say that anymore, we just do it, you know, I mean, we don't have to say that anymore, we just do it. I know, you know, there are members of the board that remember the early days that way and it's just the way we carry about our business and I'm thinking about all the programs we have now where we've, we've changed some things and to look at that forecast and not going to look, because there's some variables in there that, you know, we gotta, we gotta keep rolling, but our momentum's rolling strong and our programs are awesome and, you know, we're, we're talking today and we've got a lot of deep programs and we're still getting better and, and our expenses aren't exceeding our revenue, so that's important. And I thank Jeff Anderson and Patty and that group down there because they're always, their advice is outstanding, the communication we have with the treasurer's department really helps us when we're doing our planning, so good folks. I would echo what Tom and some others talked about. Last Thursday night, I was down at Carson Elementary for a music program, Ann Robinson just does what Ann Robinson does every single time, has put out a fantastic, I was going to go there for about twenty or twenty-five minutes and had delivery to see that. I couldn't leave the concert then, I was having too much fun standing outside watching that, but I did make a delivery, watched that choir the next night, they went out and got a, a one, I believe, Tim, and Tim's got a daughter and that, which is a superior rating.
That was.
Yeah, and, and, you know.
Seven, eight required, definitely missed it as well.
So, and then Tom talking about the ROTC banquet, good speakers. Tom Blind was the keynote speaker that night, he got a shirt, we spoke before that, we didn't get, didn't get a shirt, got a picture, I treasure my picture. That's the name, I treasure my picture and, but it is, I mean, it's good, you want to talk about the growth of a program and meeting student needs, it's, it's crazy good is what it is. And so thank the board for the support there. We, we scheduled, Seth had a whole list of, Seth usually shared out with the board, so they have, and I'm, I think it's reception, or reception Friday at the key club, so Mike just, not this big, but, but anyhow, that's a lot of good programs going on, we're going to be bouncing around a little bit with that, so good stuff, great time to be a cat.
It is. Neat, neat stuff going on all throughout the community. You know, I thought I was going to get to share that starting conversations thing until you interjected, thank you Scott. It's okay, it was the one thing I had left. But it is, again, neat, neat on Friday, or tomorrow, Leah Wingire and Carly Streep are signing letters of intent to play athletics, one at Shawnee, one at Hocking College. So just cool to see more and more students who, if you've got children in the district, get them engaged in something, Lego Robotics Choir, Band, some, some of the athletics, some of the different clubs, key club, ROTC is awesome, any of those things, so they can continue to stretch themselves and build those relationships outside the classroom. That's a wonderful opportunity for them. Thanks so much to the financial accounting team for, and their award obviously. Other people are recognizing what we already know and have known for some time. We've known by Jeff for many years, you all have done a fantastic job. And so that's why I asked Mike, we are going to be able to push twelve years on what was a three-year, three-year renewal. And, and so we are being as, as diligent as we can with the resources that you gratefully provided, that's the millions of people out there who are watching now. And, but I love the grandparents thing. We have a lot of grandparents that are raising, that are raising grandkids and we have an organization now to help them connect and get resources and those kinds of things. Your schools are doing their best to become better all the time and realizing that every student's important that way. And so that's what we want to be able to do. But, you know, lots of stuff coming up, some of our teams are competing in district matches now and that kind of thing, concerts, awards, I think honors awards for the high school are next Wednesday, athletic awards for twenty-sixth, I think there's just a lot of cool stuff coming up, so, so yeah, it's, it's easy to say, it's a great time to be a cat. And those that are leaving here are finding this one may be a new one. Once a wildcat, always a wildcat. And so we like that too. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Return to executive session, let me read this for you. At the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, and compensation of employee, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensed, or student, unless the employee, official, licensee, or student request a public hearing. So we will return to the turn of executive session. There may or may not be any action taken after the executive session. Not sure about that. Thank you.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?